Dave.
Good, um.
It worked.
This is Tom Felner and I am going to call the special committee meeting of Economic Development Airport to to open. Mr. Ivy and Tom Felner are present. Mrs. Earleston indicated that she was not able to make it. I'd like a motion to excuse Mrs. Earleston from tonight's meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Ivy makes the motion. I second all in favor.
All right.
Motion carries, Mrs. Earleston is excused to enjoy her vacation in Michigan. We have a fair fairly lengthy agenda today. Are there, since it's a special meeting, we can only hold our discussion to the agenda as presented. So I'd like to make a motion, like to hear a motion to approve that agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Ivy makes the motion. I second all in favor.
All right.
A motion presented carries. The first of five discussion items involve the old Wrenchville's school property on Galleon New Winchester Road. So, Mr. Mayor, can you give us a little summary?
Yeah, I think that there, there are three of these that are interconnected. And so, three of the, the five that are interconnected in one way or the other. The, the situation with the Wrenchville property is that there is a, a property developer who is interested in agreeing to build a handful of homes out on that property. And the request that he's made is that although he has an option on that ground, he'd like to have the city. And without getting ahead of myself, I think it's probably best to have the Port Authority be in a position to assume that, that option and be the underlying owner of the old Wrenchville property. So that's probably the simplest way to, to, to address just that. What we have is the chance to purchase that, get at least five new homes on it. And then if I had my way, I'd, I'd like to see the Port Authority in the ownership role so that they could negotiate with, with future either developers or future individuals who want to buy lots to put those up. I think that's better off than to have the initial developer have future development control over that 10 acre parcel.
Okay, Mr. Ivy, questions?
Yes, um. I think the mayor pretty much explained it in his closing there of what the, I was going to ask, what are the alternative or what is the alternative if the Port Authority did not own it? I'm not sure. I mean, this is new news, so forgive me, I'm not up to par. If, is there any other explanation or a brief history of, you know, how, when and where? And I do like the idea on the surface of the mayor's suggestion. Because, you know, housing obviously is a need. And that they could definitely play a strong role of that in the future as that we get into some housing development in the future, hopefully. So, you know, I'm not sure, I'm claiming ignorance here. I'm sorry, I'm not even sure which questions to ask. I know there's an incredible opportunity for new housing in town. And on the surface, I think this is a great idea.
If I might address just a couple of things to add on a little bit. The, the sense of urgency and why not just wait till after the next council meeting? Is that this kind of idea may not generate unanimous support. We may have a strong majority, but one or two people may be against the idea or against how we would propose to, you know, how the port would, would pay for this transaction. So I wanted to make sure there was enough time. There's a 60 day option and I, if I'm not mistaken, that's, we're about 10 days. Not we, but the developers about 10 days into that, maybe a little bit longer. Give me one more minute or so on this. The way this happened is kind of funny. We, the, and it happened relatively quickly in talking with an investor who's shown quite an interest in Galleon. With, you know, the discussion like it would often go or sometimes go, you know, anything else going on? And I said to the, to the gentleman, you know, we're really trying to get a spark on housing, local housing. And that led to a discussion about a project they're doing up in northeast Ohio. And then shortly thereafter, the, the two brothers came down. And we met out at the, at that property that we own, kind of adjacent to the, to LeVance. And had a conversation with the owner of that property. And, you know, I, it didn't look like that, that particular project was going to happen at that time. What was on the table is the same five commitment to build five houses. So without getting too much into detail, the next day, you know, the endless Google search that some of us are on. I'm looking at Google Maps. I said, well, you know, I, I'd really like to develop the city ground, but gee, right over the hill is what I, my opinion is that that is probably the best residential development ground that we have with utilities right there. And, and so I just passed that along to, to the, to the, the potential developer. And then from there, real estate agents set up this, this temporary option. So I, you know, there's other things we could do, Aaron, you know, what we need to do. We have a little bit of time, but I wanted to, you know, and certainly you can extend a real estate option. That would, you know, that's pretty common. But I think it's a really good opportunity. And I think all involved would like to not have to send the estate or the real estate person a letter asking them or telling them to cut the grass out there. So if things were to work out, we would send that, that letter, cut your grass to Eric and the port. And, and they would take care of it.
Okay.
Sorry.
So there's. What would happen if we don't do it? Well, it'd probably sit there like that. I think it's a really good opportunity. I'm, I'm kind of excited about it.
We, we do or do not own that property?
We don't.
Sorry, I kind of froze up there.
I think the mayor froze.
Yeah, the city does not own the Wrenchville property.
Okay, so the, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor? Um.
You may have to boot back in. Oh, it looks like he unfroze now.
Okay. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we're just deal with this technology.
It's worries. Um, so, Mrs. Bell answered the question that the city does not currently own that property. Okay, so the next question is, um, the advantage of, and I'm trying to summarize and paraphrase again. The advantage of the Port Authority purchasing that property from the current owner is that, again, the advantage is that of the Port Authority would control the development. But when you, you know, when you buy a house, you know, Pam and I are looking for a house and we're going to go, wow, Wrenchville's that area. It's really good, like you said, and we want to buy. So we would purchase the whole parcel of property and the house from the developer. So that, that would be a normal real estate transaction, even though the Port Authority owned the land and there was the developer that was putting the nails and screws in.
Did he go off?
I think so.
The mayor just went off.
I'll chime in.
Oh, thank you, Eric.
So I, I think for these first four or five houses that could be built by the developer, the port would essentially be a financial partner and maybe could receive a share of the profit for the sale of each of those houses. I'm just kind of speculating here a little bit, but if the port controlled the property after those houses on New Winchester are completed and sold, we could control the development of the rest of that property to the benefit of Galleon, however that form takes.
How much property is out there, Eric?
About, including the part that has the factory, I think it's about 11 and a half acres.
So that would support how many?
I, I've looked at it a little bit the last couple of days. It's zoned R1C, so technically we could achieve a little higher density if we want to, but I'm kind of thinking because of the Hessenauer Division, we try to develop it to R1A or R1B standards. And so I think you could get about 26 units out there.
Really?
Something like that, yeah.
Wow.
Doctor Felner, can I follow up with a question, please?
Yeah, Eric, hold on one second. Aaron, um. 26 units out there of single family?
That would be considering, you know, part of the scenario would be, do we try to acquire that factory that's back there?
Okay.
So that, that would be if we owned and owned that parcel basically and developed it as well.
Meaning the Port Authority?
Right.
Okay. And, um, so, Mr. Mayor, back to you. Are you, are you with? Say again?
Not yet.
So if we, if we did not acquire that factory, then it would be less, less than that, but.
Do you know, Eric, and if the, is the owner of the Wrenchville property? And, and I'm, when I refer to that, I mean, the grass that's growing there where the old school used to be the same as the owner of the factory?
I, I doubt it.
Okay.
I think the, the property that's for sale, I think is in the name of Hottenroth.
Okay. All right, Aaron, um, you know, don't plead or beg for forgiveness of ignorance because I am right in that same canoe with you, so.
Perfect.
Ask away.
All right, is the mayor on yet, Julie?
No, I'm waiting for him to be been, so I don't know if he's still having.
So if I, if I may, I just continue directing my question to Eric. Eric, we're talking with, ideally, if we get the factory property as well, you're talking up to 20, 25, 26 units. Are you talking 100 to $200,000 home range, 2 to 300,000? $100,000? Are we looking at potentially having to put new roadways throughout the area? You know, obviously, you know, because not every house I'm sure would be frontage. And I'm still not clear on how advantageous, advantageous, you know what I'm trying to say? Advantageous it is, or the advantages of the Port Authority buying this property and almost acting as a realtor? Or would we contract out to a local realtor to sell the parcels? I guess those are probably three questions just come to mind. The value of the homes that are going to be built, possible roadways and new streetways that might have to be built with that. And my, what I finished up with, so.
Um, after we do the, if we did those four or five properties on New Winchester, anything after that would require new infrastructure, roads, utilities along with them. So that, that would be something that would be necessary. In terms of cost of the homes, I'm not really sure at this point, but I would, I would kind of speculate at this point, their market rate houses are probably 1,400 to 2,200 square foot houses. So maybe you're in the 200 to $300,000 range. I'm just kind of off the top of my head.
Sure.
And, and you know, the way I'm looking at, maybe there are some bigger properties for more custom homes that are maybe a little bit more than that. In terms of an advantage of the port doing it, I guess it's just one less thing for the city of Galleon to manage.
Well, and also.
Versus, I'm sorry.
You, you know, the port would control the development of it as opposed and have maybe a little more flexibility on what goes on in there as opposed to having the developer own it.
Right.
And say, well, on this parcel, you know, since it's R1C, we've got a customer that wants, you know, fabrication there in someone's backyard. So I think that's the major advantage of the port owning it is to control the development of it to make sure that it is resident. Because right now it's R1C, so it's residential slash commercial.
Okay.
You know, so.
I don't know that you can do a lot of commercial in R1C.
Right.
Other than a home business possibly. So R1C is normally the older neighborhood, so the parcels can be smaller.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Right. So I, that, Dr. Felner, that was going to be my next question. You know, I was, we were, if you're going to be concerned about zoning issues, but you answered that, so thank you. Eric, thanks a lot for the answers. I, I really don't think I have any other questions, Dr. Felner.
I'm trying to get the mayor back in, so hold on to.
So Julie, I'm going to direct this to you. This discussion item, um, is it potentially? Okay, so I, I'm getting a, a message from Mr. O'Leary that he's unable to reconnect and he would like me to suspend the meeting until he can log back in.
I'm trying to get him in right now.
Okay, so, Mr. Ivy, I'm going to just kind of have some dead air here.
I, I agree.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Julie, I did see that he was logged in previously with his iPad. Is, maybe he could try logging in and zooming in with his cell phone. I don't know, just.
I'm trying to see if I can find, get him in. Send him a new link, but sometimes it doesn't go out right away. So I got to open my thing and see if it's sent. Up here he comes. Okay, he's coming in now, so I sent him a new link, so.
I'm back.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I'm back.
Oh, good.
I have no idea. I've been frustrated for a few minutes. I'm not sure what the, where I lost Doc Felner's question, so.
Well, um, Ms., Mr. Kent answered satisfactorily. If you, if you trust his analysis of it, the questions that Mr. Ivy and I had. I guess, I, I, my, i- if you would like more input is the advantage of the port owning the property as opposed to the developer or the city? And I know that's kind of a reiteration of the definition of the port's advantage, but.
Yeah, I follow. Let me see if we agreed. I bet we did. As so far as the developer, why, if the developer just proceeded, exercised the option and built the houses that they want to or that they may commit to, they would then control the pace of future development. And have a real cordial, the, the, these, this developer has invested money in Galleon a couple of times. So there's that trust factor that's real positive. I'll try to fix the lighting in here in a second. But the other, but again, if they have work in other areas, they would control that pace. So the other, the two alternatives might be the city or the port. I think the city would, would be a lot more restricted, hamstrung, if you will, in terms of negotiating with individuals who wanted to buy a lot and build a home or other future developers. So I, I do think it's, it, you know, the, the notion that the Port Authority is simply about the free center. I think, you know, while certainly about that, it's, there's some other really good things that they can, that they can develop that. So my guess is that, that they would be much more aggressive in getting the infrastructure in and developing the subdivision than maybe the, the guys who initially want to test the waters, build a few homes and then see what happens.
True, well. You'll be happy to know that Mr. Kent was spot on in your absence.
Okay, good.
All right.
That's good.
My next question, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Ivy.
Um, I, so is this something that's standard with port authorities across the country, I guess? Because, I mean, and don't get me wrong, on the surface, like I said, that's, it sounds like a great idea. And would you guys, everybody agree if it is not standard? Is this something that we have a sense of urgency for because of our housing needs in the community? Because I think that would be an acceptable reasoning as well. Is that part of the motivation of this possible, of this proposal?
Yeah, I think that, that, that in my view and why I'm bringing it with a bit of sense of urgency is the fact there's that option that the, the clock is running. And that I'm very interested in building support for getting at least these five houses built in the short run.
Well, I also.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, finish.
Port Authority, I think what's cool about it is that they can tailor, alter their direction based on what the community that they're in really needs. You know, if this were a more urban setting and we needed a lot of multifamily, middle, lower income housing, they could be a vehicle to get that done. What, what, what the housing study said we needed was apartment complex for that niche that's now being filled. And there was a need for at least 24 single family homes. So it's really kind of looking at that study, you know, not waiting around for someone else to, to be the sole developer, but us as a community taking an active part in making that, that housing need gap, filling that.
Exactly, I think that, um, I'm, I'm trying to draw the right metaphor, but we are kind of on the forefront with the Port Authority concept versus other communities. When you think of Port Authority, you think of major metropolitan, urban areas. And the fact that we can show smaller communities how it would be to an advantage. I think this is an opportunity for us. And I, I just am excited about utilizing the, the, the Port Authority concept and, you know, showing how it can, it, it can work to develop this community. Because everyone in the city bemoans the lack of development, the lack of jobs, the lack of fill in the blank, you know? I, I just think that this is an opportunity for us.
And Dr. Felner, if I could piggyback off that, it, it actually, now, listening to you, I didn't realize that this could be something that we're almost setting a precedent, like you said, for other communities that have a port or are considering a port. And it could be something as far, it is definitely in my mind, something as far as economic development for the future. And there, and you get, get the Port Authority directly involved with the housing development. And that, they could focus and on that single project or form committees versus, you know, like the mayor alluded to, having the city be in charge. Or, you know, the other, the other alternatives where we don't get anything done because we have a guy that's holding out, owning all this land. So, you know, piggybacking off that, you know, this is setting a precedent. And it, it is exciting and it could be expedited much quicker, I feel, through the port, solely focused on this project, you know, amongst all the other projects that they have. So this is a great idea.
Right, we want to build, we want to get that moment of inertia and build some momentum on that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, the next question is, is there a legislative need? Do we need Mr. Palmer's input on? So how, how do we go about this?
That goes way back to before I, I dumped out and I was talking about the three of the five are, are interrelated.
Okay.
So I'm not sure on the agenda as approved what the next topic is, but that, that suffices explaining what we're talking about as far as the Wrenchville bullet point.
Okay.
I don't have it for, what's the agenda?
I'm pulling it up right now, guys, hold on.
The next item is the redevelopment of the old Eagle Crusher.
Okay, that real quick, this is, my hope is that while this doesn't have maybe the initial reaction, I, what I know is that there are needs for housing that would be comparable to the, the Hessenauer subdivision and what's on New Winchester across from the old Wrenchville. I know there's a need there. I also know that there's also a need for single family and at the most duplexes in, you know, other places in the city. So what, what through tax foreclosure, the city has become the owner of that. It wasn't, you know, like waiting to spring it on council, but in that sense, but that's, that is just happened in the last few weeks. And what I want to have considered is, and this is something that doesn't need legislation, it's more on the bat burner, but I think there's great potential here that we consider having the port also take ownership of that, those acres and then work with a demo contractor to negotiate the best price to get that lot cleaned. So that's the, that's the think about it kind of proposition. There are other ways that we could accomplish funding that, that cleanup. And so it's, it's kind of odd, a little bit difficult in this Zoom format to get into much more detail without running the risk of, you know, maybe getting into rambling or those things, but that's the overall outline. Do the same there.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Uh, just real quick, is that property, would you say, from the South Market Railroad Street tracks on the east side down to Parsons? And backward, you know, right up against the old Charlie's Market from back in the seventies and eighties? Is that the length we're talking about?
Right, Pershing to Parsons Railroad tracks, the east boundary, Market Street, the west.
So we're talking two city blocks? We're talking from the tracks to Parsons and all the way down to Pershing?
One city block.
That's one city block plus a railroad track. It would, yeah, so, okay.
Well, that, I, I can tell you from experience on council prior to the mayoral system, that parcel of land has been a stone in the city's shoe for years and years and years. Most, most of the problems have, were, were caused by the, the previous owner and his non-compliance. But we also had, um, an asbestos issue when the, the, that factory was demoed, which we rectified, but I'm telling you, it. when the, the, that factory was demoed, which we rectified, but I'm telling you, it was an EPA, uh, not, I won't say a nightmare, but there were so many, um, so many considerations, uh, because of the potential airborne, you know, this asbestos falls into a, a couple of categories. Um, the shingles that you throw off an old roof are one thing, but when it gets to be in a big pile of bricks and cement dust and it gets, can get airborne in the wind, that's a whole different ballgame. Um, you know, so we, we spent a lot of money and rectified that, but yet that neighborhood has suffered with the blight of you know, nothing but a, an empty lot. So I am thrilled to be able to be able to do something, um, productive with that and especially residential in that neighborhood. Um, that it, it's nothing short of fabulous.
No, we're going to start it. Thank you for that. I think we're going to start it. Everything you said is correct as, um, before it's re marketed, it's going to have to be a clean site from an environmental point of view. And we're, we're just getting, we're just talking to a couple of different contractors at this point about their approach to disposal. So the, there, there may be some people interested that would take it off site and do any demo demolition or reconstruction, do the jackhammering somewhere else. I also expect some people to just propose taking that, digging it out, making sure it's not asbestos laden and therefore hazardous. And if that's the case, then just dumping it at the landfill. So we're, the, again, it's, it's real early in the discussion. But I think the, if, for instance, a clean site goes to the Port Authority, they've got, if you will, nothing in it.
Right.
And so what they will need to charge for lots, uh, what they can, to do to build some single family homes. You know, I think that's part of what makes it happen. You have the tax incentives. And then you have the ability to have that lot price be a real competitive.
President, I, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, just, uh, and we're also, uh, you know, again, setting a precedent, throwing that opportunity into the basket as basically the, uh, Wrenchville opportunity, setting that precedent and having them focus on development and those, that project. And, you know, that I, I love it too. You know, being a galleonite, I, I've seen that I saw, I lived down on Pershing and I grew up on Oak Street for a while and my goodness, how exciting, how exciting. Thank you.
It's, okay, now one more thing, Doc, and then we, we got some more stuff that I would encourage you to, you know, just driving around, go back through the wood streets back there up Pershing. And, uh, the condition of, and the parent occupancy of those houses, like there's a lot of, of our, uh, you know, residents, our neighbors live in those houses. They look really nice and that says to me, you know, they'll, a, a new home there, uh, will hit a certain gap in that market. And, um, I, I really think that is one, is extremely important in being able to add to the job base. You know, whether it's Shutterfly or someone else that, that wants to expand here. I just think that's, I think having an answer to this housing, uh, gap will set us apart, if you will, or in terms of convincing people to expand here or come here.
Correct. Um, you know, so many, so many houses back in the galleon heyday grew up around, you know, the, the job base, the factories and things like, and certainly Eagle Crusher was a, a major player in the, uh, in that, but you know, that neighborhood around there, those people take a, a lot of pride in their, uh, their homes, um, not in a flamboyant way, um, they are, but they are, uh, you can, you can see the pride. So, you know, developing that for residential and something, um, really nice in that area is, uh, not really, you know, good for the city, but specifically for that neighborhood that's, uh, uh, had to put up with this for so long.
So that's where Eric Kent, and if Chad's still on there, you hear it, council wants you to go ahead and take this one. It may be a little harder to develop, but it, you know, it's not exactly a package deal, but I think for the community, having both of those at, you know, being available for, for housing is kind of like you guys all said, it's, it's, there's a, there's excitement to it and you know, given a little time, I think it will pull it off.
So again, this is a discussion item and not necessarily legislative, but we're sort of giving tacit approval to the Port Authority to start, um, investigating. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I think that's right. And to come back to you and say, okay, here's, here's how we propose to pay for the cleaning of the site.
Okay.
We didn't get this what site kind of reaction. It's like, who, you know, who, who, uh, went out on that limb? So we're, we're committed, uh, but what we're trying to do now is get good estimate. And then I do have a couple of ideas about ways that, um, the city could fund that. So we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Tonight, but in pretty near future.
Can, may we go on to the next discussion item, which I assume item three, the COVID loan, uh, Port Authority process kind of piggybacks into the first two items?
Yeah, that explains the question that wasn't asked on the first topic, which is, okay, great. Well, you know, the, the port's going to buy this. What are they going to use as funding? And so, um, one of the things that we could do and a solution that Thomas and Brian and I thought through and talked through today is to change the existing loan, the existing arrangement with the port to administer the COVID program. Turn that into a grant. And then Brian would be able to use some of the city's CARES Act money to fund, um, those business, uh, support loans.
So let me just, uh, interrupt you there. Way back when, uh, when we decided that we were going to have the Port Authority and the COVID loan to small businesses, that money was to be paid back to the city. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So instead of doing that, change that in any kind of monies that get returned to the port to let the port utilize it as opposed to going back into the, uh, the general fund plus the CARES Act since the state and the federal government seem to be pitching money at the municipalities.
Yeah, yeah. What I, what I would add to that is that it's, we're, it's eligible for COVID funding. Uh, if it's not going to be paid back, if the, it's an eligible activity to loan money to those people.
Right.
Nag comes in the way it is set up now, the money, um, flowing back to the city. So Thomas looks, it maybe help clarify.
No, no, you're spot on, Mayor, but what practically what that means, uh, gentlemen, is that uh, we're going to have to negotiate a change to the port, the agreement we have with the Port Authority.
Okay.
Short order, but that's done. Uh, so my office will get with David Rogers, who's their attorney. And we'll get, uh, a new agreement, revised agreement to get to you so you can approve it as early as next Tuesday.
Great.
Two weeks from then.
Deal.
Awesome.
And I think, I mean, this is a, the, the, the win-win kind of thing. I think they were willing to administer the loan program because they see the, saw the value. I'm sure they're when, and I can't see if Eric is still on, but he's muted, but I'm, I'm real confident that they'll be, uh, the port board will let their lawyer know, yeah, we, we were in favor of it becoming a grant. Gee, it's, it's a, it's a good thing. So that takes care of that money. The, the, what, the, the other part of the money that hasn't been loaned, that's what ties back to, funding for, uh, the, the port to do the, the real estate acquisition. But in that, I don't think this is, I don't make it too complicated, but we sent 190 over, roughly 90 has been, been expensed. The other 80,000 has yet to be loaned. And under the current agreement would flow back to us. If, if we, if council chooses to change it from a loan to a grant, that 80,000 would stay, not eligible for COVID reimbursement, but they're eligible for the port to spend on, you know, the betterment of the order, which I, I'm pretty confident that this, giving them the resources to, to, pay for the transfer of that option is, I mean, I think we've, I'm, I'm sensing that everybody is in agree, that's a good thing. So the 190 went over, um, the 93 or so that's been loaned will be offset with COVID, sort of an internal transfer. Um, that's the wrong word, Brian, but
That's close enough.
Part would just be a, a grant to the port. A critic might say, well, it's additional funding, you know, and, and a critic who would say that would kind of be saying, well, we don't want to do the, the residential development project. And I, I'd love to have a discussion with somebody who doesn't want to turn Wrenchville into a, what I think will turn out to be a real cool asset for the, for the community.
Well, I think one of the, um, the issues, again, this goes back to my comment about the unique, uh, idea of Port Authority and, you know, the hesitancy by council. That's a wrong word. Um, this is what I was hoping for the, the flow to, um, to the Port Authority with funding. We've asked them to do a lot and, you know, said, well, uh, here you do this and, you know, with not a lot of monies and uh, not that, um, close to $90,000 isn't a lot of money, but it, you know, it's, uh, showing that the city, um, i- is pursuing the, the Port Authority with, uh, with meaning, not just in, uh, in saying, oh, we're, we've got a Port Authority.
Right. Yeah, I think, and I also, the, I'm kind of an annoying as at times to work with and stuff, but I don't want to be a one trick pony. I understand that the Free Center is important and they're going to continue to work on that. But I think they can, you know.
Absolutely. It's got to be multifaceted.
Yeah, those guys can do a couple of things and, and then it starts to, then those skeptics are going to say, oh, now I kind of get what this port's about.
Right.
Just a, a, a foil or whatever to build the, the Free Center. It's, there's these other things that it's going to do for the community over time.
Correct. Aaron, do you have anything else?
No, um, I would just be preaching to the choirs. Um, very productive meeting. It's being a lifelong galleonite. I'm just extremely excited about what I'm hearing. So.
Good.
Uh, next discussion item is, uh, CDBG funds for, uh, Elks demolition.
Yeah. That one, I can make it quick. The, the, there's a fund 408, um, fund 408, there's around 30,000. Uh, it's been there. Uh, we've talked to the state, we had a public hearing. Uh, and, uh, but when you look at the current appropriation, there's no appropriation in that, uh, fund. So, one could, there's a couple of things I'd like to go ahead and get it ready to roll for the next meeting. Uh, given, I don't, does finance meet before the next meeting, Brian?
No, we would have a council meeting Tuesday. Between would be.
Yeah.
And the between would be the finance meeting.
So excuse me, Tom.
I just want to, if I may, Doctor.
Certainly.
I just want to correct the mayor on a small point. It's actually Fund 402.
Yes, I was going to say that. Thank you.
And, uh, just for some background on this, in the 19 budget, there was the appropriation to expend this for demolition purposes was not done. It was not carried forward. So we would need to reappropriate it for this year. That's, that's all I had, Tom.
Going to, uh, uh, just make that little point myself. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I had the fun about, yeah, that's good. So that's really the idea. I, I, the, if, if there's a question of which committee, you know, maybe it should go through finance, but I think for me, it's kind of a distinction without a difference. And I think, you know, if you want to, if you guys, you know, want to call Gail, see if he has any concerns about that, that, you know.
Well, I will contact him in the, in the interim, um, between now and Tuesday. But I believe that, um, with Brian's, uh, explanation there, that it, it should be satisfactory to, um, go on to the agenda, uh, on Tuesday. Mr. Ivy, do you have any?
I have no objections to that whatsoever. I mean, demolition is part of development eventually. So regardless of which committee, I, I am ready to move forward as well.
Certainly. Okay, uh, last item, Free Center update.
There is an ordinance there for you guys to approve. Sorry, I did not get.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't, uh, see the, maybe I didn't open the correct.
It's in the, it's in the attached, I sent the attachment with the.
Gotcha. Let me open that real quick.
Yeah, there is an ordinance. I think it's 58.
Yeah, I remember getting a late attachment this afternoon. Um.
Yeah. So if you guys approve to send that out of the committee, that would be wonderful.
Uh, let me, okay. Um, so I would like a motion to send ordinance 2020. I have it as 59.
Okay, it might be 59. I have two ones.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 59 on the full council for consideration.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, Mr. Ivy makes the motion. Um, I will second that motion. All in favor. I, uh, motion carries two to zero and we will, uh, send ordinance 2020 dash 59 onto full council Tuesday for consideration. Now the Free Center update.
Sorry.
That's all, no, thank you very much, Julie.
Doc, I'll, uh, I've got an E for Eric. I'm not sure if Chad and Eric were able to stay on. Yeah, they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, both of them there.
Yeah, they are. There's a lot going on. I'll just set it up this, there's a lot going on, on the, the process of identifying and then selecting a design build firm. Uh, there's, it, it, a, a lot of things moving forward pretty quickly. And I thought if, if either council had some questions or a quick update would be, you know, would be appropriate.
Um, Aaron, the, um, maybe last meeting, um, you had some questions and we kind of, uh, assigned some tasks or, uh, go ahead and take this if you have anything on, uh, Free Center.
Well, the last that I had heard, the account, the account itself was approaching or had surpassed about 10.8 million dollars, a million dollars. You know, I, I have been, I've just heard through the grapevine that there's a potential, uh, additional land donator uh, to donate two parcels of land that are going to be budding up against State Route 30 for water retention, possible water retention pond and a, a system for, uh, water runoff, uh, for the foundation. for water retention, possible water retention pond and a, a system for, uh, water runoff, uh, for the foundation. You know, but as far as getting with members, I think if I recall, it was about the Freeze Foundation and the monies that were there, um, I'm not sure if there's really anything else to update on that. Unless the mayor's had meetings with members of the port or if any of the members of the port that are present right now have any updates. But that's basically what I have heard. Um, I think it was on social media during one of the mayor's Monday night, presentations that the, uh, I think Jen Coons, uh, mentioned that there was ten point eight million dollars in the fund currently.
Yeah, that's right. And then without belaboring, I have Eric and Chad kind of share what they've been moving ahead on. But the, the, the discussion was if you reduce the annual distribution by de-capitalizing, that sounds a little dramatic, but reducing the overall endowment, you will have an impact on the amount of money that one eighth that goes to the scholarships. So we want to be mindful of that. We'll also reduce, um, the amount that comes to the city. If, um, you know, the, the, the principal is reduced by some number of millions of dollars. So that's about all I have to add on, impact on the scholarship program.
Well, that's something I, I'm looking forward to their presentation, um, in October or November. Um, I am under the understanding that there are several contractors, well over a dozen, possibly approaching twenty that have at least have been in contact with the port, uh, about, uh, being interested in having a hand in the building of the free center. And the more bids, the more competition, the lower the price possibly could be. But I think until the port, my personal feelings, uh, Dr. Felner and mayor and others is that until we do get that presentation with this committee, I mean, we could speculate to the moon and back. But it's nice to know that there is progress and new news, so.
Agreed.
Don't have anything else to add. I'm just looking forward to their proposal and presentation.
Eric, you want to just?
I'll just give you a quick update, uh, what's going on with that right now. We released a RFQ RFP and about August twenty-fourth. We've had a lot of positive response. A lot of companies are interested. We had a pre-submission meeting last Friday. We had fifteen companies show up, uh, mixed between architects and general contractors. I've had at least seven other companies, um, contact me that are interested. So that's, you know, over twenty companies are interested and participating. They're forming design build teams right now and they're putting together responses to the RFQ. And we should get those responses back by September tenth. And so we'll be able to select, uh, a short list from that group. That's about it.
And, and maybe just to kind of expand on that a little bit, so that, that process will get us, uh, like Eric said, a, a list of firms that we want to approach for, uh, for proposals, uh, which would be more hard numbers for the building of facility. And at that point in time, um, obviously we'd have those, uh, proposals to, to look at. But we would then be able to, I don't know if you want to call it finalize, but we would be able to narrow in our focus on the second, you know, the next piece, which is the, the eventual funding of the facility and how that, what that would look like with the mixture of, uh, you know, whether that's a mixture of liquidation of the fund and, and borrowing or, or whatever that ends up being. But so this, this is kind of the next step to try to get to a more firm numbers that we can, um, you know, proceed with that, uh, with the work we've been doing with our financial advisors to come up with a, a solid plan for, for the funding if it's possible. Um, the only other update and maybe to, to your point, uh, Mr. Ivy, is that, uh, the port was able, was in, received a, uh, piece of property that, 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 uh, is it right next to borders of the property that the city gave us for the facility. Um, and that also came from a, a foreclosure. Uh, we are working with, uh, another property owner there to, to, to split our property and theirs. And that way it gives us a clear path to that retention point you're talking about. So, uh, the port would then eventually hopefully own the property all the way to, to thirty, um, from where we are currently. And that catch basin that you're talking about, uh, would be built there and is necessary not just to the, the development of the free center, but is also necessary for any other further development out there because that property is right on the, the divide. So you have to have multiple catch basins out there. So that's, uh, you know, it's important for the freeze center potentially. But it's also important for the, any future development out there in that area.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Doc, I just make one, I promise, quick comment. I think they're describing a deliberative approach. Uh, they're among advocates unabashed. Let's get this done, folks around town. There's an impatience. There's some skepticism, you know, they've been talking about that for forever. But I think the, the, not that I agree with every step or every single member of the port on, on each smaller issue. I think I want to compliment that they're moving through this methodically. And I think that's the, the right thing. The, my biggest reservation cost-wise right now is while there's a good bidding environment, a lot of competition, maybe not a lot of work. The thing that is brutal, whether we're talking about lumber for housing or in this particular case, steel and concrete, uh, for, for the, you know, the design that the proposers are working on. Those prices are, are, it's, you know, it's a tough time. They're spiking up. And, and time will tell whether we get real good bids on construction fees. But the materials cost will, you know, will cost to step back and, and continue to reassess the, the budgetary part of this. So that's, that's real good deliberative process. And I hope the materials don't, um, you know, cause us to, you know, to have to rethink or, or whatever would be a unplanned contingency.
So, Mr. Ivy, anything else?
Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, no, again, I'm just reiterate, just looking forward to, uh, the, uh, the, when they come and they give us the proposal, we see real numbers, objective data in front of us. And, um, you know, I still very optimistic and I agree with you and the mayor. And it is the port's responsibility to be methodical and to, un, you know, turn every stern o- stone over. Um, so very happy with the pace that we're at right now. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Good. The next, uh, this was a, a special meeting. Do we need the meeting next week? Which would be the regular, uh, excuse me, the fifteenth, which would, would be the regular scheduled meeting, Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
I, I don't know right now to be honest with you.
So I'm, I'm going to leave.
No, I'm sorry. I do think there's an issue that probably meets, uh, um, help me, uh, executive session guidelines that I hadn't mentioned this to either the auditor or the director of law. But we may be talking about that, uh, at the next meeting and the date of that is, help me. The next council meeting.
Okay.
You have one on the eighth, which is today.
Right. I'm going to, um.
The next meeting that we want to talk about, uh, a strategy that may be, be as much of a legal as a development issue, uh, for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And it, you know, it has to do with the city's position and relative to our ownership in the central hotel. And, you know, and trying to get, keep everybody fully apprised. It's, it's not a, everybody getting your lifeboat situation. But it, it's, it's, uh, something we really've got to, uh, keep counsel initially informed. And then as, as we slowly step through the process that you all know. And there wouldn't be any surprises there. And Thomas, I don't know, we don't want to make this longest night, but go please.
No, I was just going to add, Tom, the one, one caveat I would say to that is, I'm not sure as it currently sits that it's at a point that we can go into executive session on that particular topic. I don't know by the second, it may very well be in that kind of a position. But, uh, we're going to have to make sure it fits one of those magic reasons to go.
Other than that, I don't think we have committee business, additional committee business. Doc, back to the original question.
Okay, so, but I am going to leave the next, uh, meeting for September fifteenth, which would be the regular meeting and we can discuss that, um, at a, at a council meeting, what the need for that or not, so.
And it's easy to cancel, so.
Exactly. Um, next meeting in time are September fifteenth at twenty twenty at seven PM. Uh, may I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion to adjourn this.
Ivy makes the motion. I second. All in favor. Uh, motion carries two to zero. And thank you very much. Um, I was, uh, uh, kind of hesitant at the length of this special meeting, but a lot of good information in there. So, um, thank you all very much.
Extremely productive. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
All right. Good night, everyone.